Should be your own, whenever you are.
All right, it is 5:15, July 2nd. I'll call the meeting to order. Ashley, will you do roll call, please?
Lindberg.
Here.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Here.
Kroger.
Here.
Kelly.
Here.
Peterson.
Here.
We've all received the agenda. Do we need to make anything adjusted or just leave it the way it is and skip over three? Anything formal? Doesn't matter.
Leave it how it is.
Leave it how it is, okay? Motion to approve the agenda.
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson. We give the second to Lindberg.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
You wrote 90 to get here, that's why you gotta get me sure I represent this. Any conflicts, state those now or along the way. Under the consent agenda, under one motion, under one roll call, we have minutes of the June 18th council meeting. Claims list 1317 in the amount of $549,792.42. We all received a breakdown of some of the larger ones. If anybody has any questions or concerns, Ashley, Jean.
I would just comment, Mayor, that as was determined in budget for, that over $100,000, that is the city's support of the transition with the ambulance EMS. As all of the three members of the ambulance commission, the city, the hospital, county, prior to conversion, we'd committed another year of funding. And it was agreed that we, until the revenues fully kicked in for the new service, that we would all front load those for an excess of a year. So that is our full year payment towards the ambulance, new EMS ambulance service and the last year of the commission, which was included there.
We discussed those items at one time, but knowing this is the claims list when it took
place, we wanted to bring them to that.
Okay. And then we also have a new member of the fire department, Mitchell Lyman. It's always good to see a new name. Is there a motion to approve the consent agenda?
Motion. Second.
Motion by Nippert, second by Shaven.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Under other business, we have resolution 2570 ordering construction of certain public improvements, approving preliminary plans and fixing a date for hearing thereon and taking bids therefore. That's a lot of words for 2570. There are a lot of printed words that came along with that. Anybody have any add to that, Jean, as far as?
Yes, we have Todd Peniston on the line with Beeson and Kim, who's our engineer with the waste art plant. Todd, can you hear us all right?
Yes, can you hear me?
Yes, we can, sir.
Great.
So this is a project we've been working on for some time. And a quick refresh, the two funding components to this large project, it's a sewer lining project, it's preventative maintenance of lining with the CIA cured-in-place type process that we've done in some other areas of town. The two main funding components are ARPA funds, which we've been holding with the intent to spend for this project, and then the successful application and approval with the CDBG grant. So it's gonna be $1.3 million project, accomplish a lot in terms of maintenance for long-term performance of our sanitary sewer system. We got Todd on the line to provide an overview of the project and answer any questions, and we can talk about timelines thereafter. So turn over to you, Todd.
Yes, thanks, Jean. Yes, as Jean mentioned, we put this project together based on previous sewer videos that were taken by another firm on the entire collection sewer system. And we got about 22,000 linear feet of sewer ranging from eight inch and then some 18-inch that'll be cast in place pipe. Basically, they come in, they open the manholes, and then they run a new liner down the inside of the pipe, they invert that using steam or water pressure. And then we've also got four point repairs that are identified. There were four areas that needed to be fit and repaired externally, digging up the sewer main, fixing that before we lined it due to the condition of the pipe. We wouldn't have been able to land without the repairs. And those four repairs, we've got about 215 square yards of pavement that would be removed and replaced as part of that as well. Jean had mentioned the estimate is approximately $1.3 million. And that was based off some of our previous sewer rehab projects that we've had. The only thing that I would add to that is that there is a Buy America, Build America requirement as part of the CDBG grant, so that may increase costs somewhat. We'll see. It's typically been in that 10% to 15% range, but we'll see. Hopefully, our estimate's high enough that we'll come in under that, but I just wanted to add that since our previous estimates. Our previous projects did not have that requirement. Other than that, I'd be glad to take any questions that anybody has.
I have a question. Todd, how long does the liner typically last?
Typically about 25 years. It is a stand, can be a stand-in-place pipe if it needed to be. And then what I mean by that is if, say, the existing pipe that we're lining, if there were ever to be a failure in that pipe, the liner itself could be a freestanding pipe buried that wouldn't withstand the pressures of the soil above it. But usually you can expect at least 25 years, if not more.
Anybody else have any questions?
Pulled up on the map again, there was a lot of information in your packet, a lot of requirements with the CDBG funding element. And once again, SWIPCo has been our administrative partner on this, and Todd's been working, we've been facilitating, working with them to ensure all the required language, that's all been signed off on. So that probably increased the size of the spec packet. I don't know, maybe 10% or more, Todd. And then within the spec sheet, or excuse me, within the plan sheets, I pulled up, this was in your packet as well, and this is what, between the specs and the plan sheets, which is about 12-page, which I have here too, I'll pass around a hard copy. But the sheet I pulled up, there's the 12-point repairs, and then the other four sheets in there indicate the blocks of lining intended within the project. Should be very minor disruption to residents. There are a few larger users which will coordinate because for the time in which that liner goes in until it cures and then the new holes are cut out, they're encouraged to minimize use of their sanitary sewer during that day or portion of the day. But that's all coordinated with the project. The timeline is looking at a project completed no later than July 1st of next year, and bids would be due the Monday, the, it's the Monday following the August 6th council meeting, so it's about a full month to get bids in. So for the month of July, we'll get that posted this week on the required sites as well as the required posting in the paper. So the Monday, July 29th is when we'll be opening bids at 2:00 in the afternoon, which is again included in all the notices and bid notices.
That was 22,000 feet, is that correct?
Think that, how many thousand feet again? I don't have that sheet in front of me, Todd.
No, 22,117 feet, to be exact.
And it's bid as a whole, not pieces, right?
Correct, correct.
Like one group is not gonna do the concrete main?
Well, they're gonna suck, I mean, so for the point repair, they're gonna be sucked out from the sewer lining company, but they would be the main general on it. So if we figure about 300, 310-foot city block, so, you know, just under 80 city blocks, that's a lot of length.
Where's the majority of our 18-inch sanitary sewer located at?
Did you hear the question, Todd? I've got the 18-inch, a lot of that's down along the east side of Exchange, it follows the main collection system on the northwest part of town, and then a lot of it is down Chapron Avenue. Would be the two main 18-inch areas on this project.
Thank you for joining our meeting tonight.
You're welcome, glad to do it.
Is there a motion to approve resolution 2570?
I'll make that motion.
Motion by Lindberg, second by Nippert.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Great, thanks for joining, Todd, we'll be in touch.
Thanks, Jean, appreciate everybody. Have a good night.
You too.
You too.
Bye-bye.
Next, we need to receive and file the Streets, Alley's and Sidewalks Committee Minutes from June 25th of 2024.
Motion.
Motion by Kroger, second by Lindberg.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Now that being, we need to, there's a motion to allow curb cutting and drive entrance request of 16 feet at 1122 Sixth Street.
Uh, no.
This is Jerry's.
Yes, this is, we've read the committee last week, and the readings brought the committee was just because of previous discussions on downtown parking. This is off, this is a block off the main square where there's typically less parking issues or concerns. And although this won't result in the loss of a parallel parking stall, where actually, as you saw on the map, or those who were at the committee meeting, and it's on the map on the screen, that we'll be able to add a spot, which is currently a loading zone in front of Fair and Square. But it allows access for the improvements he's doing with the property, and this was a property also, it's the old gas station, and the intent is he's rehabbing, remodeling that, making it also a nicer appearance to the southern entrance of downtown. And this is also a previous, or most recent recipient of our HHPC or facade grant improvements, so he's received some of those funds as well. In terms of just full information and make those in the downtown area aware of what's going on, that's why we brought it to committee in front of council. Had some good discussion within the committee, but I guess any committee members want to further comment on that?
Have we had any other public comments, comments, questions?
Nope.
Have not, I've not had any.
And I think we tried to determine, too, we think it was actually maybe a driveway or it was, did it have an entrance there at one point in time, way back when? Or I know there was some discussion on that, maybe not, we tried to look back at some stuff, but.
For example, this section of the, way back in the day when it was a gas station, that
was a canopy, where this canopy is now enclosed, so tough to determine, they liked it came in on this side from the south off of Durant, and then was an exit back on Sixth Street. You know, that's decades ago, right, when the gas station was in operation? Would have been way before the 90s, in which the downtown street project was done with all the curb and gutter.
How about 70? I know, never remember a gas station.
A gas station, it was a gas station, I'm not so sure of the exact date, but Jerry has his research.
Yeah, I heard that, I mean, so there's research, yeah, it just goes back a few years.
Basically, it's just allowing us to cut the curb back out to make it a private entrance,
Okay, is there a motion to approve this?
Motion.
Second.
Motion by Peterson, second by Lindberg.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Then we need to review the HHPC downtown upper story and decide grant completion and award request for 919 Seventh Street in the amount of $16,277.65.
We, as practice, bring these back to full council for final payment. This address is also known as the Milk and Honey Building, and this is one of two projects for the previous fiscal year that were multi-phase project. The multi-phase projects can get a little bit quirky in terms of timing, yet you may have noticed here in the past month that there was activity around that facility. But the two main improvements that compose of this phase were new windows, and then the most recent was getting all the tuck pointing done, which certainly a key component we have on an older structure, and that tuck pointing was completed here just within the last 10 days. And as part of our review process, we did ever inspect it, go out and just confirm these items were complete, and this is in front of you for final review. And then there is one other that's in, another multi-phase for upper story living, that the committee were actually meeting with the applicant, they're requesting extension, which we've not done an extension with this program for probably four to five years. So we'll be meeting with that applicant within the next week, and then the committee will need to review that consideration for an extension. But that's not for this project, but just awareness on the other outstanding project for this fiscal year.
You see the motion to?
Is there a motion to approve this request?
I will make that motion.
Second.
Motion by Lindberg, second. Aye.
Roll call, Lindberg.
Aye.
Nippert.
Aye.
Shaven.
Aye.
Kroger.
Aye.
Kelly.
Aye.
Peterson.
Aye.
Moving right along, city administrators report.
Just a few things this evening. We're two days prior to July 4th. Had a couple soggy days, sounds like there may be some rain in the forecast for Thursday, yet Thursday evening, I'm hearing is, not that I have a direct line to Mother Nature and the exact forecast, but at dusk, we're hearing should be conducive for the fireworks. If not, the rescheduled date is for Friday evening, if that does need to take place, and if that takes place, I'm sure there'll be a lot of communication will go out. Once again, just ask for community cooperation, discharging fireworks, I know there's been some of that happening. I checked with our dispatch as well as the sheriff's office this week, they've had a few complaints. Again, just ask for, as at previous two meetings when these appeared, just ask for our community and residents to be considerate and mindful of the neighbors, as well as animals and others that may be affected by loud noises and those types of things. Couple of activities coming up over the next month, I'll let Todd talk a little more about National Night Out, because I believe you'll be in touch on that. And a recent announcement just got posted on social media last night, this morning, is there will be a movie in the park. And this is primarily, or being driven and hosted by the Dream Playground Reimagine Committee, and that date has been set as Friday, August 16th. And over the next month, you'll see quite a bit more, some teasers and information on the exact movie selection. But once again, that'll be on Friday, August 16th at Pioneer Park on the hillside. Be some other activities and concessions and a great family event, it's been a few years since we've had one of those. In, just received the, it's the city mailbag a few days ago, and I've got, I'll pass this around, but it's always another thank you note. And this was from the Relay for Life Committee, and appreciation for use of the downtown area. Obviously, they appreciate the courthouse and the county's board of supervisors, but a nice thank you note to the city, as well as our public work staff for just the cooperation with equipment and cones and those types of things. So I'll pass that around, I want to share that with you all. The June 25th storm that came through with high winds and some of the ice pellets, and some ice pellets to ice balls of various sizes. City facilities were having all of our roofs inspected by a contractor, we've been in touch with our insurance agent, but initial visual inspection, seems like they may be okay, but we're going to have a more expert in the field come look at all of our facilities, all the way from fire department, library, pool, city hall, wastewater plant, and get a roof inspection, all those. We did have a few vehicles that had some hailings, and we've also been in touch with our insurance agent in, I believe it's the week of the 22nd, where we're gonna have estimates done on those in town here. So also, emergency management, we just reposted it on the city website, but anyone in the community that's had damage, if you could, it's a real short form, we just reshared it today, I think maybe Todd's office, just sent it to Jenny a little bit ago with HMU to ask to repost that. And that's, the intent there is to try to get a holistic look at the amount of damage that was reporting up to the Department of Homeland Security in state as to what total impact of damage may have been in Harlan and Shelby County. So ask for our residents, if you have damage, if you just take a few moments and fill out that document, it's an online form. And if you need to print it out, feel free to stop in the city hall, we'll be glad to print one out for you as well, but it's a real short inquiry on that.
Yeah, the hope is that we'll reach the threshold level of damage, so at least at the state level, we might get a declaration, which would give people a little bit of money to help them out with their repairs.
That's the intent of that. Just last week, we have an annual maintenance, talking about weather, we have an annual maintenance and inspection with all, with our five in-town sirens, and those inspections just took place last week, and all five are in-town sirens checked out fine, all the way from batteries to frequencies to sound. And now with the weekly test at noon on Mondays, again, with the shore siren on Mondays, just not only here in Harlan, but throughout the county, hopefully ensure that all of the sirens are operating properly. We did get the report back, just Roger Beeson coordinates those, but Blue Valley is our annual contract that provides that service for us. Next week should be, or will be the last week for the sewer inspection and cleaning that we have a service for, it's called CIT Sewer. They had a short week this week, just Monday, Tuesday, it'll be finished up next week. And again, what they're doing is they're inspecting all of, we do it in quadrants, it's been a few years since, now we're getting back on schedule, that if your future projects are maintenance, like we just approved for a lining project, having those inspected on an eight-year rotation, as well as taking care of any imminent or immediate issues is what that service does. And they also clean all of the areas as they go through. One item we can improve for next year is we can do a better job with some of our resident communication. We had posted some things on social media and reposted, but we can make better use of either some door hangers, as well as using our iV Alert system that could get our residents a bit more notice. Because the potential, the potential impact there is if, with the high pressure on the sewer lines within your home, you might get some back pressure, and that's why it's everyone's encouraged to close your toilet lids. That has always happened consistently. So that should be complete, or will be complete next week, and an item we can improve for next year would be the citizen communication. And last couple of items, I spoke last, under my report last meeting, with the HomeServe, which is the Sewer Lane Warning Program, with the second round of mailings. We've had ongoing inquiries as to why, there's question as to our in-town or local contractors aren't showing up when they call, they can't get confirmation, or in-town contractors are certified with that company. And been in touch with our project and account contact, and not gotten an official response yet, but I've let them know that prior to authorizing your future mailings, that I will let them know, I told them I'm discussing with council that prior to authorizing your future mailings, we want some things confirmed, that they have contacted all local contractors, confirmation of that. So, but if you have any questions about that program, we know there's been over 200 policies in place at this point. To my knowledge, there's only been, I guess, as of a few weeks ago, only one claim that has been filed with them for any of the warranty or repair work. But I wanted to at least update you, that's in the works at this point, but have not gotten an official response from them as to the recruiting of local contractors, what the status of that is. Any questions with that? I know some of you have had questions on that, I feel a few citizen calls on that as well.
They've had plenty of time to answer that question, correct?
Uh, just to say really the last month, and then I know their account manager just P and I schedules, but pretty confident I got their attention pretty vividly in here in the last 10 days. Again, note, they generally, with our marketing agreement, which we approved, that they would mail three to four times a year, that's what their marketing schedule, and there've been two mailings this year, so the next one likely wouldn't happen until fall or late fall. Yet prior to authorizing your future mailings or solicitation, there's some questions I feel, or we believe we need answered, and I'll report that back to you.
Just a point. Thank you.
As someone who's signed up, they remind you every month that, what they're doing, so they're very proactive as far as making sure you're checking your policy, checking your policy, checking your policy. It's encouraging people to respond back to you, as those emails come back to someone who's already signed up, so it's, so you're always out there somewhere, so.
Have you asked to be unsubscribed with?
Not, no.
No, okay.
No, no, I told Jean I'd gone through the process, because of where I live, my policy's null and void, because I have a business in the home I lived in, so I didn't read the fine print, so I'm, so I'm one of those that when I call, it don't really matter, because they, so I put that out there, because if you have a business in the building you're living in downtown, they probably won't cover it, you know you live there, if there's any kind of a business, so.
That does not apply to commercial?
No. But I did, while I had him on the phone, because I had been approached by private contact contractors in the area about them not being a part of it, and I did, so I'd say, well, I'm gonna change hats, I'm not just a policy owner, I'm a mayor too, so on that side, how, you know, can we, how do we get people signed up? That was three different people that really didn't have the authority to really give me an answer, and so Jean had followed up, and he's got someone a little more official than I did, so I was just on the phone tree for a half hour, talking to three different people that really, they were just wanting to answer the generic questions that they had the responses to in front of them, so that wasn't one of the questions they had, so.
Well, it's definitely a legitimate concern, I mean, I would agree why we're not realizing why they have not been contacted, so I'm curious to see what their answer is, or if this is gonna maybe seem that they're going to start doing this, but it sounds like we're going in the direction we need to go in, so.
We'll keep you updated.
Okay, thanks, Jean. Anything else from your chair tonight?
Unfortunately, we had some damage at one of our park restrooms just in the last 24 hours, and I know the law enforcement is, so determining the next steps, either pressing charges on the damage to restrooms, that's one of the realities of having public spaces, and just encourage, again, families and parents and children alike to, you know, do your best respect to our public property, which is your public property, it's the community's public property. Unfortunately, those things happen, but in this case, the, those that created the issue have been identified and they've been dealt with accordingly, and I believe the repairs have already been made as of this afternoon, so, and that's what, to the Pioneer Park restrooms. Unfortunately, I want to report that to you and ask for everyone to take care of our stuff, which is your stuff too. And that's all I have for tonight, Mayor. And that's all I have for tonight, Mayor.
Okay, any questions, or anything else for Gene? Thanks, Gene. Uh, I don't, under my report, I don't really have anything, uh, other than we lost a, I'm, I'm not sure Dick O'Brien passed away today, and I know I've seen his picture, and the pictures and years gone by of chamber events, ribbon cuttings, and he was a gentleman who was involved in lots of things in our community over the years, and, uh, um, good, good fellow to have in our community, and, uh, just applause for this, with his family. I don't know if he ever sat up here, was he ever on council?
I don't believe so.
I don't think so, I just know he was involved in lots of things.
Very active in the community, in the business community, chamber, um.
I know, and he retired and stayed in our community, and been here, told very young, so. Other than that, I don't really have anything from my chair, so, uh, I will move on to Todd Malin, and she'll be going to Chamber of Commerce and Industry.
Good evening, everyone. Just got one informational item and then some, uh, market calendar type items. The informational item is just a reminder that the third quarter Hotel Motel, uh, committee meeting will be next week, and we'll be reviewing, uh, four applications that we received for events to be taken place in the fall, so looking forward to, uh, getting that, and hopefully they all have filled everything out correctly, and we can, we can give them the money they need. Um, we will be having an ambassador visit next week on Friday, July twelfth, at nine AM, that'll be our annual ambassador visit down at the fairgrounds, and, uh, always enjoy going down there and seeing what new things are, they have for the fair this year. Uh, as Gene mentioned, Tuesday, August sixth, we are going to do National Night Out again, and the last time we did it was in two thousand and nineteen, this will be at Vets Auditorium, it'll be from five-thirty to seven-thirty, and the idea of National Night Out, uh, actually started down south, and it's an opportunity for community members to meet their law enforcement, meet their emergency responders, meet their support groups, and get to know these individuals outside of a situation of where they're being responded to. Um, a lot of the equipment will be down there for people to take a look at, we, uh, believe we're gonna have a rescue scenario take place, a demonstration that people can see, we'll have some food down there, uh, it'll be a lot of fun, uh, last time we did it, uh, we had a great turnout, it was really enjoyable, and then our friend COVID showed up, and we just hadn't gotten back to it, so we're gonna do it this year, um, and it's, it's annually done on, uh, August sixth, so, um, looking forward to getting that done. Another thing that we're starting in August, August eighth, which is the second Thursday, we're gonna start an after-hours networking, uh, from, starting at five o'clock at Milk and Honey, so every second Thursday of the month, we'll be there at five o'clock with some appetizers, and whoever wants to come by and just do some business networking and some personal networking, we're looking forward to that. And then Friday, August sixteenth, finally, uh, Shelby County I U Extension and Outreach, they're hosting a farmland leasing and management workshop at nine AM, there is a cost to it, it is twenty dollars, and to register, people just need to give them a call at seven one two, seven five five, three one zero four, so again, that was August sixteenth at nine AM, uh, farmland, uh, leasing and management workshop. So other than that, that's all I have for you tonight.
What time is it, National Night Out, for again?
It'll be from five-thirty to seven-thirty. We'll be getting some flyers out, getting some social media out, we've got one or two more groups, and we just want to confirm if they're gonna be able to be there or not, so before we start with the information.
Let them make a quick council meeting.
Thanks, Todd.
Thanks, Todd, appreciate it. What's that? It's good to get that back up and going, those are.
Yeah, we can do our council.
Yeah, they could.
We're both.
Perfect.
Throw it out there, please.
Anyway, Joe, still in Mississippi, was not the old ten tonight, so we pretty much moved on to public comments, any comments from anybody up here?
No more rain, we're good right now.
Yeah. Good luck with that.
Yeah. Thank we didn't miss the, potentially predict it overnight from three to five inches, and we got one inch variety, which was much more tolerable.
The nation won't too bad, is it?
Yeah. Just wish everybody happy and safe forth, and another reminder to, please mind the city ordinances.
Behave, yeah.
We're not dictating on your freedom, we're just setting policies and procedures.
Okay, meeting adjourned.